Good evening, everyone. This is the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the DeKalb City Council, February 12, 2018. City Clerk Sue Herman, please call the roll.
Jacobson?
Here.
Finuchin? Marquardt?
Here.
Fagan?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Burbick?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Seven present.
Just a point of information, Alderman Finuchin of our Second Ward is suffering from the flu and will not be with us this evening for either the Committee of the Whole or the regular meeting of the City Council which follows tonight. There are no items on the Committee of the Whole tonight which are also on the regular agenda, and so I'd like to move on to considerations. Our first one is special event coordination, and I'd like to ask our Community Development Director, Joellen Charlton, to speak to this item.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The purpose of this agenda item is to speak to the processes and requirements that are in place with regard to special events. The city has had some very nice longstanding relationships with some special events that have been held in the city over the years. Events like Corn Fest, Kish Fest, Holidays, and others are very effective at showcasing our community and making us a place where people are attracted to and want to come visit. Increasingly, also on the other side, not-for-profits and other organizations are asking us about new event ideas and asking us to consider what it would take to get these new events as a means to increase awareness of their organization, their business promotion that they want to do, or just simply to further promote the community in a way that will bring more tourism to the area. We did have a couple of events last year, as most of you are aware, that happened and were ultimately great additions to the community. A couple of those events, however, did not go off without a hitch, and as with any major event or party planning, sometimes the devil is in the details. Seasoned groups like the Corn Fest group know all about this, and they spend months in advance of their events planning with the city, so several months in advance of the meeting. Community development, public works, police department staff meet with these event planners regularly to go through what they should, you know, be seasoned professionals at, but they, over the years, have realized that things change, that there's a better way to do things, that something happened last year that hadn't happened before, and there's always a way to make your event better. So with regard to some of the new events last year, the city did not find out certain details from the event organizer until it was very late in the process, which made things very challenging. We did manage to pull those events off, but some things ended up being very last minute, and so we wanted to try and avoid doing that in the future years. So we did meet with the organizers from those events from last year in anticipation of trying to do a better job this year and working with them on those details so that we could be better prepared and bring something forward where they're not running into the regulatory issues that they ran into last year. It also helps us identify the various multitude of issues that come up in an event. I think sometimes people don't realize that there can be a difference whether your event is on a city street, or on a state right-of-way, or on public property, or private property. Different insurance requirements and approvals come into play depending on what you're looking at. So, for example, if the event is on a city street or in the alleys, we need to make considerations for what kind of police, public works, and fire department personnel are required to be responsive to the events that happen. Sometimes that involves us requesting and receiving mutual aid from our neighboring communities, and so those efforts are necessary to make sure that we have time to coordinate with those communities. If the event is planned to block public parking, we need to make sure we know where that is and that we have ample time to notify merchants and customers that the event is occurring so that they can either advise their customers and clients, or perhaps make plans to join in with the activity. Speaking of parking, which is also an issue, we also want to make sure that an event is adequately parked and that people with disabilities have the proper accommodations. Alcohol and food are other items that we take a look at, and again, depending on whether it's on public or private property, it makes a difference on how those items are regulated. The city has sometimes criticized that too much process makes things too cumbersome and that too many rules don't allow us to be competitive with our neighboring communities. So we're here to remind everyone that it's usually a pretty good reason that the rules are in place. I think in all my years in this type of a profession, every rule that's on a book is usually in response to something bad that's happened. Dean has a great story about the city's mass gathering permit ordinance that was developed in direct response to a very bad couple of events that happened in the past. So the process, however, doesn't have to be a bad process. All we really want to do is communicate. So if people have ideas about bringing a new event into the community, we're asking that they meet with community development staff and just come in and discuss those details. Examples of how city staff is responding to recent requests for events. So following last year's Treptober event, city met with Rotary Staff Club members to determine what would be needed to conduct the event this year. Staff has also met pretty recently with Michael Embry to discuss Kish Fest and a variety of his other events. And in going through that, we've determined that we can put the items together into one package detail and bring it to the council for consideration. In other words, the detailed conversations with the event planners help us make sure that their events are successful with less red tape. Again, the primary purpose of bringing this presentation forward was to advise the council on how, following up on events from last year, and to encourage anyone with a new event idea to contact the Community Development Department so that we could get plenty of time to plan for those events. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Before we turn it over to council discussion and questions, I know Michael Embry, who perhaps knows more about entertainment and special events than a lot of people in this community, has registered a intent to speak. So, Michael, if you'd like to come to the podium and speak on special events.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, and council members, as well as staff. As many of you know, I'm pretty proactive about special events and the effect of tourism. Special events brings an economic value, jobs, and a positive image to our community. The fastest-growing segment of the hospitality industry today is special events. As a member of a national organization that reviews over 600 special events across the country to select North America's top 100 events, I've seen about every type of event that has happened, from small cities to large cities. These events have helped create awareness of the community, has helped create a branding, has also an economic impact for the community. We see this very importantly as these cities are starting to grow. Every city around the area is having some kind of special event. Example, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, is known as the festival capital of the Midwest, hosting over 30 festivals during the summer with millions of dollars in revenue. Fifteen years ago, the city of Norfolk started a arts festival from a three-day event, is now a six-week event with an economic impact of $17 million for the city of Norfolk, Virginia. Smaller festival, smaller town. The Gulf Coast of Alabama has started five years ago a national shrimp festival. It's a four-day event, brings a quarter of a million people to that area. And if you think about a quarter of a million people spending $200 apiece, if you add that, kind of multiply that together, that would fix a lot of potholes in our city that may be broken. So little things we could look at. Locally, every little city is now emerging and doing something. I know the chief is from Ottawa. Ottawa, the second weekend in June, has a wine lobster and jazz fest, which brings over 6,000 people to Little Ottawa in two days, which is a nice economic impact, and it's a great social event, a well-managed, well-maintained. It's not controlled in an environment of a beer garden-type environment because the quality of people is higher, and when you start looking at lobster and wine, it's a little bit different. This year, Ottawa embarked, was the first small town embark on a Kris Kringle market. We know the one in Chicago is the major impact. Wrigley Field now has one, Naperville has one. When Ottawa has a Kris Kringle market, we're missing the boat. We need those kind of activities. So, as I travel around the country, I see the importance of it. Cities are growing, they're looking for this part of revenue. It is a turnkey operation. It, most important, improves the image of a community. So when people come to our town, we all know we have problems in towns, small minor problems, we don't like talking about them, but when a guest comes to our town to a festival or a fair, has a great experience, they go home and tell their friends, "I just came to DeKalb, and I enjoyed this activity or that activity," or such great little gift shops in DeKalb that they would never know about if we didn't have that special event to come. The analyzation basically is, you know, we have a beautiful Elwood mansion. It's a great mansion, it's here, we're not going to move that. But when they have a special event, they have great attendance. Well, that's what we need. We need a special event to drive people to come here, not because it's DeKalb, Illinois, it's because there's a special festival, or fair, or activity. I know we all embraced ISHA event where we brought in thousands of people to our community, and it was a great event, and people came away and said, "Wow, what a great little town." We have other events a lot of people don't know about. We had a swing dance at the airport with over 200 people that came to our town, of only which 10 were from DeKalb. I mean, these are events that we need to embrace and get people more involved in. During the fall, the University Marching Man had a marching man contest with over 6,000 people who came to our town. Nobody knew about it. Those things we need to embrace as a community and really support so we can generate that revenue and make them welcome and feel, and we need signs out, "Welcome, special events as we come to town." So I just really wanted to embrace that fact, everybody knows special events is what's happening, and I get hired all over the country to do them. It's a very important part, and I think for ours is to create a more positive image for our community.
Mike, I know you've met with Joellen Charlton and Jason and others in our community development, and Dean, talking about some of the additional things you have looking forward here in 2018, and we appreciate your willingness to work with us, and we look forward to even bigger and better things.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, and thank the council, and happy Abraham Lincoln birthday to everybody. And was he a good student, Jerry? I'm sorry, it's a bad comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, any other comments to, or questions of Joellen regarding special events? If not, thank you very much, appreciate that, and we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is street maintenance. 2018 Street Maintenance Program. Public Works Director, Tim Holderman, will speak to this item. Tim?
You have the clicker? Is anybody there? The clicker has arrived. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, staff, and residents. We want to present our 2018 Street Maintenance Program this evening for your consideration. Our presentation outline is shown on this slide. We'll begin with talking about our 2017 results. There's been some questions about what we did and exactly what we got done in 2017, so I want to begin with reviewing that. We'll then talk about our five-year plan that was created as part of our Asset Management Plan for Streets. We'll talk about funding and the lack thereof going forward, and where that left us in our 2018 program. So to begin with, this is a map and graphic that you may recognize and remember from last year that showed the location of the street resurfacing projects and brick repair. That's shown on the left side of this slide. The red ellipses show the streets that were either resurfaced or had brick repair. You'll see there 10th Street, and as well as Market and Pine, which is in the TIF number one district, or Fund 13, those are the primary streets. And then you'll see in TIF 2, we had three brick streets, Second, Third, and Fifth Street, that we did a considerable amount of brickwork on, and then also East Taylor, as well as a couple of other single blocks. That was our TIF 1 and TIF 2 program. $500,000 in each of the TIF districts were anticipated to be spent. And then we had the patching program, and the patching is shown on the right-hand side of this slide, where we had identified areas where we would use funds from Fund 50, our capital project fund, to do major patching. And all of these projects were completed. All of these projects were completed as planned in 2017. What did not go quite as planned is the expenditure portion. In TIF 1, we see here Fund 13, which is in the left two columns of this graph, you start out with the budgeted number of $500,000, and our estimated construction, and that was above $500,000, which you'll see tonight, we have some numbers which are above our budgeted numbers as well. And this is in order to take advantage of the possibility and likelihood that we're going to get favorable bids, okay? So you see that that $545,000 engineer's estimate actually turned out to be $432 in real cost for the TIF 1 area. The engineering added in there, and then the total. So in TIF 1, we actually came in $26,000 less. And so on a project of this size, that's pretty good, that's pretty close to being right on the money. And the TIF 2 district was a little bit different story. We fell a little short. We left $200,000 on the table. And that was primarily because of the brickwork. The brickwork was very slow-going, but the price that we were paying for that brickwork was very low, very competitive. And so it was very difficult to judge during the summer construction season exactly how much we were going to spend as the project went on. You also remember that we did, removed the east, or I'm sorry, yeah, the east side of Second Street, the historical curb there, we removed that. That was an additional $70,000 that we spent on that project. But it was the low price for the brickwork and the fact that we just didn't pay that much for the brickwork, and we didn't have other streets ready to go to make up for this shortfall. And then in the Capital Improvement Fund 50, we overspent by about $33,000, again, on a $300,000, $340,000 project, that's a pretty good margin. So overall, we spent $1.144 million, which is very close to what we had anticipated. So where do we go from here? Well, as you recall, last year, we completed our Asset Management Plan for Streets, and as part of that, we did a detailed evaluation of the pavement condition index using data that had been collected over the last several years. And Engineering Enterprise Incorporated, E.I., did a very thorough analysis and came up with some cost numbers for funding improvements. If you remember, we had eight of those different scenarios, and we settled on number five, which was $3.7 million a year, to kind of maintain our streets about where they were. And so you recall, we were looking at identifying a dedicated funding source, and that ran into October, November timeframe. And at that point, we recognized that we would not have, you know, a dedicated funding source other than what we already had in place for 2018. And so at that time, when we submitted the budget, it was a $1.75 million budget for street maintenance. It was a million dollars in TIF. We were trying to wean ourselves off of the TIF district, I'm sorry, a million dollars in MFT funds, Fund 10, and then we were going to try to wean ourselves off of the TIF and go from $500,000 to $250,000, and then another $250,000 in Fund 50 for a $1.75 street maintenance expenditure in 2018. And so it was about that time, in the November-December timeframe, that I asked the engineers to go ahead and go forward with the five-year plan. That was part of the scope of services that they had committed to as part of the Asset Management Plan. And so we went forward with the funding assumption of $1.75 in 2018, and then $3.7 in the years 2019 through 2022. And they used the computerized pavement management system to run various scenarios, looking at a couple of must-dos. Augusta, which had been on the list a couple of years ago and didn't get done, and so we put it back on, and then also Ridge Drive, which had been requested. And we had placed an emphasis on collectors and arterials, as residents had given us feedback, and I think we had talked about it as well, as opposed to residential, we want those major routes. And so with that, they ran the different scenarios, and they came up with a map that showed all of the streets that could be done in that five years. Then they took those streets and they started grouping them together, regardless of which year they fell in, and they created five groupings representing the five years. And that grouping is very important because a contractor will give you more favorable pricing if his project is limited in terms of geographic scope. In previous years, we have had, you know, a block here, a block there, and a block somewhere else, and that, I think, has cost us some money because we don't have a large amount of work in a central location, and the engineers confirm that. In addition, it really minimizes the impact to residents. I mean, the whole city isn't, you know, getting torn up one block at a time. Instead, we have concentrated area that we're working on, makes communication a lot easier. And then we also included patching and some crack sealing. We want to get, working on crack sealing because that will prevent the newly resurfaced roads from becoming, you know, in poor condition in the next few years. So we did put aside a few dollars for crack sealing. So this is a map that shows the location of the streets that have been identified in a graph next to it, a table next to it, that kind of summarizes each year. So in 2018, we're looking at 12 streets, street segments, 3.2 miles for that $1.75. And then you can see in each year after that, $3.7 million, and about six or seven miles of street per year, for a total of 29 miles. So that's kind of the picture of what we could have had, had we decided to move forward with a dedicated funding source that would have funded this amount of work. You notice from the map, there is, you see the grouping, particularly in the early years, in 18, 19, and 20. Out in the 21, 22, it gets a little bit less concentrated. But in the 2018 year, we're looking at several streets in the Elwood neighborhood, as well as East Taylor Street, which is a continuation of the work that we've done on Taylor in the last two years, and then Ridge Drive up there to the north. So it's limited to three geographic areas with the majority of the work in the Elwood neighborhood. Then in 2019, we're looking at North First Street, and then the neighborhoods up there along North First Street. In 2020, we're looking at the Knowles and Malta Road, and then in 2021, we're looking at Hillcrest and some of the university areas. In 2022, looking at South First Street, as well as Sunset and South Second Street. So that's kind of the way that it fell out, and again, we recognize that we don't have the funding secured for the 19, 20 through 22 season, but we did want to show you this. And this is where we're trying to get to. This is why we need a dedicated funding source so that we can project out three to five years in terms of what our program's going to look like. Right now, we're going year to year, and it's very difficult to get continuity and good pricing in that kind of a program. So let's look at our 2018 program a little closer. This is the detail of the cost, the total estimate per street segment on the table, and then broken out by fund, MFT, TIF 1, TIF 2, and the Capital Improvement Fund. And then on the right of this slide shows the three maps with Ridge Drive, the Elwood Neighborhood, and East Taylor. East Taylor being joined by Maplewood and South 11th Street in that, for that part of the program. And then each one of these areas is shown as to what its funding will be. Ridge Drive is outside of the TIF, so it will be funded with MFT funds, $319,000. The Elwood Neighborhood was chosen specifically to take advantage of the TIF district as well as MFT. So it was very creative on the engineer's part that they put this neighborhood that actually was partially funded by the TIF and then partially funded by MFT, because as you see, the TIF would never have completed the entire program, but when it's supplemented by the MFT, you get a major impact in this neighborhood. And then East Taylor and those other streets associated with East Taylor are in the TIF, in the second TIF, TIF number two. And then the balance is made up with this crack sealing and pothole patching of $202,000. So the total of $1.75 is listed there as requested by the engineers. We do have the Second Street curb that may go forward yet this year, so we've added that in, and then added those line items along with engineering. Engineering was not included with that for a total of just over $2 million. We recognize that this is over our budgeted amount. Again, we're hoping for favorable numbers coming in, and would also ask council to consider, on this particular program, to increase the funding on the two TIF districts. And you see, as we go fund to fund, the MFT fund would be safe there, would be under a million. We'd be over in the TIF 1 and TIF 2. TIF 2, remember last year, we were under by $200,000. This year, we would like to use 150 of that, and then also use 175 or so in TIF 1. So we're not quite getting down from our 500 to our 250,000 for TIF 1, but we're in that, we're moving in that direction. And of course, these are all preliminary numbers. We will be bringing forward a recommendation for an engineering contract in two weeks, and then with that, and your consensus on this program, we'd be moving forward in developing a set of bid specs and moving quickly to get this on the street and get our contractors bidding on it, and hopefully be ready when school lets out to move quickly into construction. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Having not received any requests from the public to address this particular item, we'll now throw it open to comments and questions from our city council. Alderman Noriko.
Tim, in taking a look at when projects are scheduled, how much of an impact in decision-making is the presence of a public facility? I'm specifically thinking of Lincoln School, and to my untrained eye, but also hearing comments from people, the stretch there is terrible, and, you know, there are parents picking up kids, there are buses, and I have to believe, you know, the constant buses there, you know, really cause the street to deteriorate faster. According to this, we're waiting five years before anything's going to be done there. So...
Well...
And I know there are a lot of competing needs, but again, you know, just thinking about the school and, you know, the constant traffic there and so forth, it's... about the school and, you know, the constant traffic there and so forth, it's, it's a concern.
And the, the needs are many.
I know.
And the resources are few. The, as you mentioned, that would be addressed in year five of the plan. But the plan is nowhere near being funded.
Yeah.
So...
It may not even be year five, in other words.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Alderman Fagan.
Tim, on the South Second curbing, that was budgeted for last year. So where was the money, where did the money go for that then? I meant, a little lost for that.
Yeah. It was not spent. And so that's the TIF dollars in 2017 that did not get spent.
I get, okay, I got it.
And that's why we're asking that the TIF in TIF two be more than 250,000 dollars this year.
I got it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions of Tim on this particular item? If not, thank you, Tim. Excuse me, David, I didn't see you there.
Again, I don't know if it's necessarily for Tim. I mean, I appreciate, we have somewhat of a focus of a plan in place. I think the greater issue is more for the council. How do we fund this? I mean, that's, going through the retreat process, having this discussion now for a couple of years, we know what we need to do. Again, very shortly, I think it's up to us and incumbent upon us to identify how we're going to fund the three and a half, or 3.7 million a year. And updates are great and presentations are great. It's time to get to the work that we need to do. And that's something I think we should have scheduled on the agenda shortly to figure out, again, prior to some of the budget discussions and prior to some of the staffing discussions, if this is a priority, then how do we fund it? And that's got to be something we look at very, very shortly.
Absolutely. Thank you, David. Thank you, Tim. We do have a couple of people in our audience who would like to speak to items not necessarily regarding street maintenance or special events. And the first one was Michael Haji Sheik. Michael?
I'm getting a little concerned with this whole pushing the TIF thing down the road kind of thing. We're going to try to, you guys are going to be looking at interested parties thing in the next meeting. And I think it's distort, and I keep saying this and I keep saying this, and I'm hoping at some point it sinks in. If the city diverts the tax money from property taxes to another TIF, it's going to distort the school district funding. School districts don't get funding from inventory taxes and gasoline taxes and, and all the different things the city gets funding from. So that's one of the reasons why it's half of our property tax bill. Now, if you take another TIF, you're going to be taking a school district, a county board, a library board, a park district, and you're going to take all the money that it's in excess of where it's sitting at the point you form the TIF and move it into the city's coffers. What, what is that going to do to the tax structure in the rest of this town? We're already at 3, 2 to 3, 5 percent essentially per total appraised value. When we go to 4 percent so we can get, you know, move TIF in? I mean, it doesn't help redevelopment, guys. It doesn't help it at all. All it does is it focuses money in one spot and makes the rest of the town poorer to do it. Now, if we were trying to do a TIF to do some project that is say, a, a company coming in or getting some revenue, but you're going to be doing a TIF for us, for the city hall. That's essentially what you're going to be doing. You don't want to have, the staff does not want to have, to have a, a vote on a bond, a bond resolution. So they want to squeeze the TIF in the back door, a bond resolution in the back door, not the front door. If you need a new city hall, have a vote. Let the citizens vote. Let us tell you whether or not we want a new city hall. Okay? Don't do it the cheap and dirty way. It'll feel good in the beginning, hey, we're getting a city hall, but everybody's going to be angry with you. It's going to be a political football. And it will not be something that this town deserves. Again, we don't need a bunch of these backdoor bond res, bond issues. Let the citizens vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Our next public participant is Mark Charvat. Mark? Again, if anyone in the audience needs to speak to anything not on the committee of the whole agenda, please give your sheet to our city clerk. And of course, we'll have plenty of opportunities during our city council meeting for folks to speak to those items. Mark, hi.
I appreciate Mike's comments exactly on the TIF. He's exactly right. We'll talk more about that later on. I want to draw your attention to the property, or the, the bills we got in the mail from the city of DeKalb, the water bills. How many of you actually read your water bills? Well, a lot of you do. Excellent, excellent. Apparently, none of these $100,000 employees read the water bills because when they were mailed, they all were larger than they should have been. This, you might recall back in 2016, we had a similar situation where nobody bothered to read the electricity bills. And I had to discover the fact that everybody in this town overpaid for two months because our city staff was not doing due diligence. Well, as you know, for a lot of people on the south side of DeKalb, the water bills were billed for 82 days for a two-month period. I believe only the city of DeKalb can put three gallons into a two-gallon jug somehow. So we were all overcharged for an extra 22 days, if my math is correct. Why was the south side of DeKalb singled out? Now, we finally got some sort of communication from the city after all the bills were mailed out. Why was this notification posted after citizens paid their bills? Somebody is not doing their job here. Why do the citizens have to constantly figure this stuff out? We have a $50,000 website where when the bills were mailed out, you could have posted on that website or on your free Facebook page that there was an error in the billing. So in essence, for those of you who live south of Lincoln Highway, mostly Fourth Ward, we all get to loan the city extra money for a couple of months until the next bills come out. Personally, I was never in favor of this two-month cycle. I think it's a big waste of money. I preferred the bills on a quarterly basis. Having to send these out every two months, I believe, is a waste of money. We really need to go back to the old system there. Of course, I believe the city's doing this just to make it seem like we're paying less money, but we're actually paying a lot more. I would like to see a lot more due diligence in maybe pre-reading these things before you send them out. Or if there's an obvious error in the bill, there should be a note in the bill telling the customer that, hey, we made a mistake. We had some piece of equipment that was broken and we'll make up for it on the next bill. But nevertheless, the fact that, once again, citizens had to figure this out and you guys didn't is pretty poor management. Now, of course, this comes on the heels of our city staff in 2018 messing up with various meetings and agendas. We had to cancel the Antiglud North meeting because our city staff did not get the meeting minutes or the meeting agenda posted in time. We had to cancel the first Finance Advisory Committee meeting of 2018, another mistake. Mayor, 2018 is becoming riddled with error after error after error. It's certainly maybe a new day in DeKalb, but this new year in DeKalb is not turning out too well. So let's do something about it.
Thank you, Mark. You're not a happy camper tonight.
[laughing]
I believe no one else has registered to speak to our committee of the whole. We will begin our city council meeting at 6 o'clock on time. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved? Opposed? We're adjourned. City council begins promptly at 6 o'clock. Thank you.